Good afternoon and welcome to the very first Public Safety Committee meeting. I am Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. In attendance today, we have President Cohen, of course, myself representing the 4th District, and my Vice Chair Blanchard, representing the 11th District, Councilwoman McCray, representing the 2nd District, Councilman Glover, representing the 13th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District, and Councilman Gray, representing the 8th District. Councilman Slifer has an excused absence for the day. Representing the Office of the President, I don't see any staff here, but the President's here, so I think that's sufficient. And representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Tyler Schinella. So I'm going to open up and give a little insight. This is the first of six yearly oversight hearings for the Police Department and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement around public safety generally for the city. We will have other public safety oversight meetings, but this is our regular check-in to see how we're doing on crime, to kind of set the standard and make sure that we're keeping up to date on how things are going. For those that are familiar with the flow, we are going to stay very similar, keep a very similar flow to the way we ran the committee last year, and I'll take an opportunity to walk through some of the rules pieces so that new members have a sense of the flow. So first, generally, we'll always start out, we'll start out with an opportunity to talk about the bill. It'll start there, it'll go to the sponsor for said bill, and then we'll jump into agency reports followed by public testimony, and if appropriate in that moment, we will consider a vote. Generally, we will accept hearing testimony for bills. Whenever folks have a desire to provide testimony, we'll provide that opportunity. For legislative oversight sessions much like this, staying consistent with the way we operated this last year, this is not an opportunity to have public testimony. However, we will accept written testimony at all times. We want to give folks an opportunity to share their concerns. We will always provide an opportunity as Chair to give folks two minutes during their testimony. We are pretty steadfast in that regard. We give folks a warning at the two-minute mark and ask them to close their statements. We'll stay consistent with that regard. As far as, beyond that, you know, I continue to remain open to working with sponsors to pull together panels, specialized panels, to help think through bills if appropriate, especially when we have experts that can help us think through some of these concerns and build topics. We will always provide, as I mentioned earlier, testimony opportunities even during work sessions. I believe the exception is voting sessions. And as with every other meeting, we will need a majority, excuse me, a quorum in order to make those votes. So I will be sending out a written synopsis of what I've just described here. Actually, Tony will be sending that out, our staff for the committee, to make sure that we all understand what the expectations are for the committee. I ask, as I always have asked, that, you know, we maintain a sense of decorum and respect for our colleagues and our guests, and certainly the folks who come here and spend time to testify. So really looking forward to kicking off this term, really looking forward to continuing to make significant progress with the partners in this room. We've made some very significant progress, and I'm frankly very proud of the progress that we've made, but we're going to continue to push to do more. So without further ado, we will jump into LO-25-0005, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention. This bill was introduced on January 27, 2025, sponsored by myself, of course, and we generally will have an opportunity within these meetings to first hear general crime stats before diving into a particular topic that we feel is relevant to public safety across the city. Today, we've chosen to dig into two programs that we actually had an opportunity to hear from in September at the beginning of the school year. That is our School-Based Violence Intervention Program and the Safe Passage Program. So we've got Monsi here to speak on behalf of the School-Based Violence Intervention Program, looking forward to an update there, and we've got the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and Dr. Brooks to speak about the Safe Passage Program. So without further ado, I'm going to hand off to the Police Department and the presentation that they've started off today.
Good afternoon, Council President Cohen, Chairman Conway, Vice Chairman Blanchard, esteemed members of the council. Today, I will provide an update on Baltimore Police Department's crime statistics, significant arrests, and enforcement trends as of January 31, 2025. As we can clearly see by the second slide up there, clearance rates right now, clearance rates are at a critical measure of how our department measures effectiveness in solving crimes. This slide presents a comparison of clearance rates through January 31 against the same period in 2024. We continue to work diligently with our investigative units to improve these numbers leveraging technology and intelligence-based policing. From the current year based against the prior year, you can see that we have shown increases in all of our clearance rates, and we've shown to be steady at robberies and arson. All of our clearance rates based on the national averages are either above the national average or within the same statute of the national average, which is a good thing for BPD. What we're doing is we're leveraging all our investigators, we're pushing them through oversight in our CompStat, Police Stat, our daily crime calls, we're pushing our units to do better. We're having individual meetings with our citywide robbery and homicide detectives in reference to making sure that we not only triage cases, but we prioritize those cases in reference to what can be addressed right now to be closed as soon as possible. We did realize that with the reduction of homicides and shootings from 2024, which has been a historic low, I don't want to go another minute without acknowledging the great work the men and women of BPD did in 2024, but with that reduction of that caseload, it gave detectives and investigators more time to really investigate crimes. Instead of just triaging them until the next one came up, they could actually do actual detective work, rubber meet the road, talking to citizens, doing investigative techniques would brought a lot of these cases to close. Yep, next slide. As you can see by the significant arrest slide, this slide outlines significant arrests made by the department so far in 2025. It's important to note that some arrests fall into multiple categories, and we are continuously refining our processes to track trends more effectively. As we look at these slides right now, we're seeing increases in our narcotics violations, which has been something that has been plaguing not only BPD for a long period of time, but our communities that we serve in reference to street-level drug enforcement. Our robberies have decreased a little bit as compared to last year, which I think is a combination of arresting the right individuals, targeted enforcement, and last year, we were dealing with a cluster of robberies that started off the first quarter of the year. We're not seeing as many robberies as compared to 2024 during the same period. Next slide. Yep, thank you. Gun-related crimes remain a priority for BPD. For the Police Department, the data here reflects arrests processed through the Central Booking intake facility and highlights the department's enforcement efforts against illegal These slides provide an overview of crime trends across the city, breaking down both, both victim-based and incident-based data by command level. This analysis helps us allocate resources strategically and tailor crime reduction strategies to specific areas of need. Yep, that's fine. It's the domestic violence one, right? Domestic and youth violence are key concerns for our department. This data helps us monitor trends and works collaboratively with community organizations and social services to address underlying causes and prevent further incidents. The slide right here tracks proactive policing efforts based on computer-aided dispatch data. Proactivity is a measure for our officers' engagement in crime prevention beyond responding to calls for service. Sustained efforts in this area helps deter criminal activity before it escalates. Juvenile crime trends, as we know, remain a focus of our strategy. This slide represents juvenile arrest data categorized by districts. We continue working with our diverse partners to ensure young people involved in the criminal justice system have pathways forward towards rehabilitation. Lastly for me, in closing, you know, BPD remains committed to reducing crime, increasing clearance rates, and fostering community trust. We are focused on data-driven policing strategies to ensure the safety of all Baltimore residents. Thank you for your time, and I will welcome any questions. And I apologize, I have a slight cold. I'm at the end of it, though. I'm good.
All good. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. I'm going to turn over to President Cohen for his first question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank for your leadership of this committee, both this term and last. I just do want to just state for the record that we have seen historic reductions in non-fatal shootings, and it is worth noting that Baltimore is a safer city than it was last year and than it was the year before that, and it is much to the credit of the hard-working women and men in this department. You all are making better arrests, you're making more quality arrests, you're making arrests that can stand in court. Of course, all the partners in this room have been a part of that reduction. It's important to note Mayor Scott, State Attorney Bates, Governor, this council, and our communities. And so I do just want to say for the record, because I think sometimes it can get lost in the sauce, that Baltimore is making outstanding progress when it comes to reducing violence. And again, I am grateful to this department and all of our partners for the work that's been done. We have more work to do, specifically continuing to drive down violence and, of course, quality of life crimes. I wanted to pick up there, we, you mentioned that at the beginning of last year, we saw a pretty, a substantial robbery pattern. Talk to us a little bit about the trends this year as we continue to have conversations about making sure our young people are safe and supported and are not caught up in any kind of criminal activity. Can you talk about patterns that we're seeing particularly as it relates to young people?
Yes, sir. One of the most, one of the leading patterns we have right now is a pattern of youth that are being targeted for their North Face jackets or other jackets of interest. We have, as of last week, approximately, I believe, 11 cases throughout the city, primarily in the northern district, had the lead of it, where individuals are going up to juveniles and then robbing them of their North Face or other jackets. What we've done is we've created a unit in reference to not only notifying school police of this pattern, but we are being proactive in those areas in reference to looking out and trying to address anyone who, the suspectology in reference to this case, the problem is you just don't know beforehand who's going to be a suspect. You see several individuals walking around right now as they go past the police or the police drive by, they don't know that this individual on the next bus stop is going to be a perpetrator. So what we have done is we've talked to our officers about being proactive, that getting out of the car, engaging individuals, just having informal conversations is enough sometimes to have, you know, body-worn camera images of an individual that may come back to be an investigative tool at the backend. So we're working not only geographically with these patterns, we're working with days of the week, getting information to the school in reference to this trend that has been going on. Unfortunately, this is a pattern that has surfaced, or resurfaced here a long time. Even when I was a high schooler, there were individuals who were getting robbed of college basketball jackets. So this is something that's been unfortunately a trend that has resurfaced now and now and then. Our citywide robbery as well as our citywide enforcement team is actively investigating it. They just did a search and seizure warrant today in reference to several robbery cases. So getting the information out in reference to potential persons of interest, being in those areas, working with our partners in school police, we believe that we will have the persons of interest in custody shortly, but right now, we're trying to quell it right now with crime suppression in those areas through police presence as well as informing the schools of this emerging pattern.
Thank you for that, and I know I've heard some of this from some of our principals in our schools, obviously very alarming and concerning trend, and I know we are going to hear specifically about the Safe Passage Program soon, but I think it is really important to make sure we have a handle on this pattern as it causes great alarm and angst both for children and also parents who are sending their kids to school every day. Again, I appreciate your work and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to touch on some of the high-level figures. One of the, actually the first slide you put up, and forgive me, I will stop doing this at some point, but because we have new members on the, on the committee, I want to help folks to understand what we're looking at when we're talking through these numbers. If you can go to the clearance rates slide, that'd be really helpful. One of the, one of the things I want to make sure we clarify, just so we don't have unrealistic expectations of clearance rate numbers, is for the current year clearance rate, those numbers are based on numbers year-to-date with a, the denominator is different or something like that.
Current year, yes.
Yeah, so throughout the course of the year, as we have more crime, all of these will naturally go down.
Yes.
So we're not expecting to have a 92% homicide clearance rate, which would be amazing if you guys could figure out how to do it, but we want to be realistic. That said, the prior year clearance rate at 71%, that is probably the highest I've ever seen it. I'm curious if you could explain to me what's going on there. I know to the point that I made earlier about the denominator, how many crimes we have still for homicides, because we have so many fewer homicides, the number of clearances results in a higher clearance rate. We know that's part of it, but are we also seeing an increase in the number of clearances or are we about steady and we're just seeing fewer homicides? Do you understand the question I'm asking you?
Yes. I think what we're seeing is a combination of both, but I think the majority of it is an increase in the clearance rate. I think working with detectives to solve the cases, a collaboration of just good old-fashioned police work, but also we have a community involvement with tips through Metro Crime Stoppers, other things that are focusing in on the perpetrators of these crimes. I believe technology, understanding where we are with LPRs and our video expansion and using video as a tool, I think it's just been an increase all around of specific cases because they've been able to massage those cases and get them over the goal line, working without state attorneys and partners.
Yeah. If, if you could fashion for the committee for the next time, and I don't know if we necessarily want this every committee, but it would certainly be helpful to see what the, the numbers behind that number so that we can have a sense of the denominator and the numerator. I'm sorry to get in math, guys, but I want to understand how we got there and are we seeing as, you know, more cases being solved or are we seeing about the same number of cases being solved, just less crime, and so we have better numbers? Both are good, but it helps me understand if we're seeing necessarily better efficiency or a lighter workload. Both are good, but it does tell me kind of what's going on behind the numbers. If we can have that for the next committee meeting, that would be great. And I didn't mention this in the beginning, generally, we will afford two questions before we move around the whole committee. The, the other question I had was around youth arrest data. I noted a pretty significant increase for this year so far, and I was curious in a similar way, is this indicative of any trends in youth arrests or is this a change in our policies? Sort of if you look through every district, we are seeing across the board more arrests of youth. I'm curious just what's going on there and if you can give me some context.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both. I think realizing that we've had unfortunately an increase of not only juvenile victims but juvenile suspects, the districts have been really hyper-focused on these individuals. We've been putting a lot of-
And if you can speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. We've been putting a lot of information out in reference to our recidivists. So the districts, either through their C-WIT, through their DAD teams, their enforcement officers, are actually taking more of an active approach in arresting these juveniles that are driving a lot of the violence within the districts, be it aggravated assaults, combat assaults, robberies, stolen autos. The districts are very hyper-focused on and aware of the impact that juvenile crime has had on their district. So that coupled with some of the newer policies in reference to paper referrals and holding individuals and actually monitoring individuals, a lot of arrests have been made in reference to juveniles just because of this collaborative action.
So just to make sure I understand you correctly, you're saying not only have we sort of certainly paid more attention to some of the activity we're seeing amongst juveniles, but we're also seeing down the workflow, better collaboration so that we're seeing, you know, more results, better accountability, more resources or whatever dedicated towards helping young people is what you're saying?
All of that. So I think it's a combination of all of it. I think once we've identified sometimes our top crime drivers when it comes to juvenile offenders, working with Lisa Reynolds in our juvenile services section, making sure that these individuals are identified, they're given to the districts, the districts are aware of the areas in which they operate, using that as a metrics to rapidly deploy to these areas. When an incident comes out, we're using our carjacking protocol. When we have a stolen auto or carjacking, individuals are quickly getting on the radio to their dispatchers, letting other areas know that they've just had an incident, so officers are then doing concentric circles in those areas where vehicles are normally dropped off that. So now that coupled with our Regional Auto Theft Task Force, our citywide enforcement team, we're making these arrests of these juvenile individuals. So using our LPRs, getting these hits on these vehicles because they're stolen or have other things, it's just a culmination of everything, hyper-focused on these juveniles because they know that this is what's driving a lot of our violence.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll give you guys a heads up. One of the issues, I had a chance to meet with many, many of my colleagues in advance of this meeting to talk about what we want to focus on in the committee. I suspect we'll, we'll continue to dig into the system and making sure that the system works well, because that, you know, here I would suggest, it looks like you guys are trying to do your job on the front end and making sure that all the support services and systematic pieces come into play on the backend are key in making sure that young people don't end up running back into the system again. So appreciate it, thank you. We're going to go to Vice Chair, Vice Chair Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions that I have. One, could you define what, I saw narcotics violations, arrests are up, could you define what constitutes an arrest for a narcotics violation?
Yeah, so normally narcotics violation is, you know, of course, of Schedule I or Schedule II narcotics, it could either be a felony or misdemeanor, so it's, it's an arrest for a scheduled narcotic.
So, yeah, maybe to clarify, is, these are arrests for intent to distribute or is it, is-
It could be a misdemeanor, it could be simple possession, it could be possession with intent to distribute, it could be the whole gamut, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think as a, maybe as a follow-up data request, I think it would be really helpful to see, right as we, as we, particularly with the upcoming focus on tackling the substance abuse crisis and substance abuse as a, say, public health challenge versus the distribution of illegal drugs as a felony, right? And, and understanding what we're looking at as we see that increase would be, would be really helpful. The other question that I have, and maybe I should ask first because tying back to the, the youth crime and arrests related to juveniles, do you feel like there's been any changes within the department? I know probably all of the council members have heard frustrations from, you know, officers on patrol and whatnot of the, the sort of, you know, juvenile gets arrested, gets immediately released, and, and the impact that has on morale and the officer's trust and the system and whatnot. Has there been, has there been any changes over the last couple months in, maybe what officers are experiencing with regards to that?
I think that there, as a whole, our working with GGS and the policies, that we have seen some increases and some changes for the positive. We realize that there is some, still some room, you know, to grow when it comes to individuals who are arrested and then for whatever reason are then released and then offending again. So that is frustrating for officers, but I will say for the men and women of BPD, while frustrating, we still have a job to do. We cannot concern ourselves with the operation of sometimes of other entities. We have to do the job that is set for us. So we'll work well, we continue to work well with our partners through Lisa Reynolds as a liaison with GGS. So while we have seen improvements in the referrals and in the custodies and then the returns to, you know, the parents, there's room for improvement, but we have seen some slight increases. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I guess my understanding, having spoken to members of the state delegation on this, is that I think there's a sentiment that a lot of the challenges are not matters of state legislation but are inconsistencies within administration within DGS, DGS. So I think that, you know, any, any trends that BPD is identifying as this is a consistent area that we're hearing a lot of this from officers, it would be, I think, really important for, for us to be aware of just because that's obviously a very sensitive concern for probably all the elected in the city right now.
Yes, sir. You know, not speaking for the PC, but I know, you know, anything that we come across, we are more than willing to share with you to make you aware and keep you in the loop. Yes, sir.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the first request was a follow-up after this hearing or just moving forward in the BPD deck that that information be provided?
Yeah. Thank you, Tyler. I would, I mean, if it's feasible to parse that, that data out as to-
I can, I will speak to data-driven, Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs. I can speak to data-driven if you would like to see it. Possession with intent to distribute slash misdemeanor possession. The only thing that I'll, I'll mention is that's going to be arrest data because oftentimes, as you know, when it goes to court, the state's attorney's office, it might end up differently at the end of the year, right? So it might come in as possession with intent, or sometimes it's arrested as possession with intent, you find out maybe that drug, when it's tested, doesn't have to be to turn the same thing. So as long as everybody understands that the data will just be like based on the initial CGIS code when it gets arrested, I can try to ask if they can do possession with intent to possession, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so I will try to work on that.
Yeah, and just to, maybe to clarify, my intent, the reason for my interest is, is understanding, you know, what number of people are we arresting because they either have it and they are dealing or planning on it or are perceived to be in that position even if it's just a possession case versus someone who has a substance abuse disorder and is using the drugs themselves?
Yes. Some of that may or may not be captured in data, but we'll do the best we can.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I appreciate it, and I think you guys understand why we would want to know that.
I do, yes.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks.
And do we have a timeline for when we can...
Right, I think that's what I was trying to clarify. Is the request that when we come back for the next briefing, is that that's just included as a part of the deck, right, in March? Or is it a request that we have BPD follow-up sometime after this hearing with that information?
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably fine by March. So, yeah, thanks.
I'm going to hand off to Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in the three districts where I represent as a councilperson, so we have Southeast, Eastern District and Central District, we have seen uptick in juvenile crime in those respective districts. What I asked, what those arrests of the juvenile, are we communicating with Baltimore City Public School Police to, you know, let them know about the juveniles that are committing these crimes in our neighborhoods so that we're all hands on deck when it comes to this matter? And even, or we have a conversation with MONC, because these are, you know, you guys are the resources, the tools that we're using, you know, to try to keep a safe hold on our communities when it comes to our juveniles. And this is a problem that we have going on. I want to give you a small incident that happened. So I had gotten a call from the Elwood Park community, right, which would be in the southeastern part of the district of a car theft. So I was there personally to meet the citizen and she pointed out the red car that was at the corner of, I think it was Bell Nord in Guy Jefferson Street. And I approached the vehicle just to see if the ignition was tampered with, but me going there, I seen an individual inside the vehicle. So the young man that I seen in the vehicle, I tapped into the window and said, listen, not police this and that, but I did identify myself as the councilperson for that district. And I was letting them know that, man, you know, there's conversation to say this is a stolen vehicle. But little do I know, when I looked in the back, I see a woman and a kid also laying in the backseat. So I'm wondering if this uptick that we see with the auto thefts and things of that nature, because what he said to me was, that was his shelter for him and his family. So, and I'm wondering, is that's why we're seeing an increase of our young people with the auto thefts and things of that nature? These individuals are also trying to provide a safe haven for themselves and their families to stay. And the reason why I put that out there, because maybe, you know, you guys team up with MONC, whatever the case may be, that we can do more outreach going into the communities to find out, meet them where they're at. Because this has been Baltimore, we have a huge population, a huge community of homeless young people. And what they're doing is they're stealing vehicles and things of that nature to provide shelter for their families. So my question is that, you know, what do you guys think the uptick of juvenile crime in those respective districts? Because I'm looking on the paper, I have the highest out of, you know, my councilman districts where the uptick has happened in Southeast, Eastern, and also in Central District.
Yep. You know, so I will say, overall, yes. So working with school police and, school police and MONC is something that we do weekly. Just as of earlier today, myself and Chief Shorter were on email and text call in reference to something that was related to an incident by a school. So we were, we were kind of boiling it down to figuring out what was going on. So we speak consistently in reference to top offenders, working with MONC. We speak several times a week in our violence reviews, also in identifying our top offenders. I will say for the top juvenile offenders that BPD has outlined, six of those individuals are in your Southeast District because they've been focused on by the Southeast District and the arrests have been made in those areas. I will say, working with our partners through our neighborhood services office, you know, looking to find those ways to address individuals prior to it having to be through the judicial system is always something that we're trying to do. Whether it's our victim services, whether it's our neighborhood, community organizations who are doing things throughout the community, whether it is giveaways or just interacting with kids in schools, we're trying to find those ways that we can actually use resources throughout the city to fill those gaps where individuals are falling in. But when it does come to individuals who for whatever reason do choose crime, us as law enforcement partners are definitely working together, sharing that information, not only in our crime calls, but also as Chief Shorter just left with our police stat. So we're all working with the same sheet of music identifying those individuals through targeted enforcement.
Thank you, thank you for providing that information. But I'm still, my focus is really on, again, I am in the trenches, you know that, so I'm there. And what I see is also that once we're making these arrests and these kids getting a court date, they're getting sent back home to their parents, whatever, you know, for whatever reasons. But my question is, why aren't we, and I'm going to bring in Secretary Shorty so he can also provide that information for us as well, when it comes to the juvenile justice system, but we're not giving them the resources before they leave the facility. So what we're doing is that we're giving them the resources, once they go to court and the judge decides what he or she or they decide their, you know, probation, whatever the case may be, all right? We got to, we got to get them before they get there. And the reason why, because if we're letting them go home to parents too early, they're committing another crime before their court dates, which is like unacceptable. Instead of us giving them the resources before they leave the center. Like we got to have those resources right then and there because that's what's hurting. The reason why, no, I'm, I'm there, I'm talking to these young people, I'm talking to their parents, I'm in the trenches, I see each and every day. Like I'm going to open up the newspaper, I'm going to look at the news, I just open up my front door and I see it every day. So again, I think those conversations need to be held where before we release them, even to their parents or guardian, whoever the case may be, what resources do we have? Social workers like right there to say, look, here, here are the resources before we let you out on your court date. And then when they come back to court, these resources are still implemented for these families. These are the things that we need. So I'm just asking, you know, all partners to partner together, even when we bring the state involved, because again, I'm not going off of what people are saying, I'm not going off no media, I'm going off what I see personally in my communities. All right, so thanks for that opportunity to speak, but please take into consideration what I'm asking you guys, but it is, again, we got to all be hands on deck. It's going to take all of us as partners to work together to really curb the issues that we have faced with our juveniles in the city of Baltimore.
Can I add something to that? Chief Shorter, School Police. So what I would say is, I work with BPD, MTA, so what we do is when I compile their top 10 and see how it relates to our suspension services and the homeless services and our re-engagement services to see if those are in fact the same juveniles and young people that we all have collectively identified. Providing them services on our side, I'll reach out to the African-American male engagement team. If it's other state, community stakeholders like We Are Us or Baltimore Brothers or the Peace Team, they say, these particular juveniles live in your area, in your neighborhoods, what services can you provide to us to help give them the resource that they need? Because if they're in the criminal justice system, what can we do collectively to mitigate any potential circumstances to keep them in our system? How can we get them out of it? So, well, what the deputy is saying is absolutely correct. So we compile these information and it's shared across the board. We have weekly meetings to discuss, how can we help these young people on both sides of defense, whether it's on the criminal justice side and the school system side? So since becoming the chief of school police, I've looked at all of these things to see if it's any tangible information that we can provide to not only the families when they come to school for these suspension hearings or placement hearings. What can we provide and not just plopping kids from school to school? Are there any factors that me putting them in a different school, does that create an additional harm environment for them that they may see a person they have a conflict with, right? So all of these things are in place, it's evolving, the collaboration has been, has been great, special, right? With portable fences coming in, even with BPD and the state's attorney's office. So we don't only want to know what happens when they get arrested, but what's the end result? At the end result of these cases when adjudicated, how are we as a school system helping them prevent them from going back into the system again?
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, can I make one request for the next hearing? That we also invite those organizations that Chief Shorter just mentioned to be a part of this conversation. I want to hear from them as well, what it is that they're doing on the ground. I do know multiple, you know, organizations there on the ground doing their work, but we need to know the actual tools they need to make sure that they're successful as well. Because once these organizations lose funding, then we're losing children as well, right? So I just want to make sure that we bring those organizations in, hearing their voices, and making sure that we're all aligned on the same page as we move forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, I think, Councilman, I think you bring up an excellent point. And I see this in my district as well, and I think it's part of, part of the frustration I think the police department has had in some of these arrests that they make and the handoff doesn't necessarily result in the solutions that prevent these young people from making the same mistake again. And so I think you are hitting the nail directly on the head. I think you're 100% right here. So I think it's going to be important for us to have just a meeting that includes DGS and probably even the state's attorney's office in understanding when we make these arrests or we have any interventions with young people that we know need social services, we are actually giving them the social services that they need, whether that's mental health services or whether that's housing or food or clothing or any other thing that might be pressures on that young person's life. I'll say this as well, and, you know, we don't have DGS here today, but we definitely have some really important partners in the room, that being folks from Safe Passage and from MONC that interact in our schools and proximate to our young people. And I think one of the opportunities we have in front of us with the right people in the room, well, some of the right people in the room today, is thinking about how we collect that information and what we then do with it. We know that if we try to take a one-size-fits-all approach to anything, we're going to leave a lot of people, a lot of people are going to fall through the cracks. So, you know, I encourage the folks who are here today to think about how we can fine-tune our responses to the needs of the young people that we are constantly coming in contact with. And maybe we're already doing that, maybe that's what we're going to discuss as soon as we pass this initial conversation with BPD. But I like you, Councilman, I'm time and time again seeing the same handful of young people coming in and out of our systems and not necessarily getting the help they need once they wave that red flag. So I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you. I'm going to hand off to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question just about missing children. Where is that reflected in this data that you shared today? So any type of cases related to missing children?
So I'm absolutely happy to add a slide for that, if you would like me to, for March. Obviously, in this particular case, we didn't get an opportunity because of how late this was scheduled.
Okay.
Legitimately, I was told regular oversight and then Safe Passage is why I have community policing here, but I can absolutely do that. As you know, our Lieutenant Colonel Homan has been here to address that. The other issue we have is usually I bring everybody. This particular time conflicts with police stat.
Okay.
So we were scheduled for noon, so we've already identified with Chair Conway the certain meetings that unfortunately I won't be able to bring everybody.
Yes.
But Lieutenant Colonel Homan does have that information. I'm happy to try to break that down. If you want to send me an email about what you're looking for, I, obviously I'm not data-driven, but I can ask them what they can give me and I can absolutely put that together.
And the reason why I bring that up, Mr. Chair, is because when we're talking about a lot of the issues with children as relates to what's happening in the city, particularly black children, I want to make sure that they are represented in this data, that we as a body are tracking what's happening with their cases, but also for us to work with partners in the state's attorney's office and MONC so that we're having those interconnected conversations as well. So if you're obliged, I would love to add that data identifier to our regular legislative oversight hearings.
Can you clarify what exactly we're...
Yeah, so I'm looking at, I'm looking at cases related to missing children. And so it can be a number, it can be just some sort of identifier where we are making sure that as a body, we're tracking missing children that are going missing in Baltimore City.
All right. If I have it, I will get it.
All right, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You got another question? Go for it.
My second question actually has to deal with CAD productivity. I know that, I was looking at the slide, I can't see slide, no slide numbers. It was a slide related to CAD productivity. The next one? Yeah. One of the major issues that we're dealing with in Southern District is the distinction within CAD between Baltimore, between the police department, fire, and others. So how are you all tracking that interaction with this chart? So I'm a little bit confused of where it's tracking. So when someone calls 911, we've been having issues where the police may or may not respond. And so we're finding that they may or may not respond because it's not categorized in the right way to like police dispatchers or fire dispatchers. How is, how is that reflected in this data that you submitted today?
So the data that we collect normally is based on the unit numbers. So, you know, I'm Unit 3, so if I get on the radio and identify myself, then the dispatcher would assign it to my sequence number and then Unit 3 does an activity. So it's normally based off of the units, the unit number for that individual. So that's how we distinguish between us and fire and someone else.
Okay. I'm wondering how many, how many responses to calls are we missing?
I can look into that. I don't have that information right now.
No worries. Thank you. And the reason why, again, again, the reason why I bring that up just for the public is many people reach out to our offices that the police may or may not have responded. And what I suspect is that it's not being tracked in this CAD productivity data that you submitted. And so I would be looking for the, you know, the other narrative of like, what are we missing? Why are they being missed? And how we can coordinate to make sure they're not missed so that we're accurately capturing all of the CAD responses that police departments and other public safety agencies are doing.
Yes, ma'am. And just as a rule of thumb for me, so, you know, whether here or in community meetings or when we meet with the CRC presidents or whomever, you know, response time or non-response for calls for service is something that we always address. So one thing for you, we try to get out to the constituents, is I can't tell you what's too long for an officer to respond. Only you know how you feel. You know, so we say that, you know, when you dial 911 for police response, if you believe that, you know, the time has elapsed, that you don't feel comfortable that an officer should have arrived by now, that you, you have the right to call back. And if calling back pushes it up into the queue, but also, you know, if an officer doesn't respond, we ask that citizens do what is called ask for a supervisor to respond. So then a supervisor can say, hey, look, as you said, it never made it to our CAD system, we didn't get it. Or we don't know why Johnson didn't respond. And then he has to hold Johnson responsible for not coming to that call in a timely manner. So we just ask that anybody who believes that they're not getting a successful service that they call back 911, if not that they ask for a supervisor.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. Just a follow-up as well on the proactivity. I would like to know, it looks like the Southeast numbers, if you look at the graph, they're outpacing the rest of the police districts and it's not even close. Could you go a little bit into that and then I have a follow-up question?
Yes, sir. So... So then you're talking about units like Mobile Metro, RAT, citywide enforcement teams are being asked to come into the Southwest to give it a little push because they are having some, as the councilman said, some issues. So sometimes districts need a little bit more to get them over, so sometimes that's reflective in the proactivity.
Okay, thank you. I think my concern in looking at that is just making sure from like an equity lens, we're looking around the city where major crimes are happening, where homicides are happening. And juvenile crimes are very important, but if the, if we're looking at murders happening in certain districts and historically it's happening there, I just feel like the proactivity also should be placed there and it should be higher. Granted, this is through 131, so numbers can change, but that's just something I just want to keep... But that's just something I just want to keep monitoring over and over again to make sure that we're actually putting the foot patrol, the business checks, the things that communities are constantly asking for at our CRC meetings and at the commanders' meetings and that they actually reflect their concerns as opposed to, and you may not be doing this, but what it may seem like is you're chasing the tail of the media putting people in like a frenzy.
No, I understand wholeheartedly. So each district has like the same playing field as far as operations, right? So it's indicative of each district commander to decide, I'm going to use bike patrol for this, I'm going to use foot for this, I'm going to use, which is PC Whirly's thing, car stops for one thing. So each district commander has an allotment of resources in reference to how they want to do their proactivity. My job as the deputy commissioner is to make sure it is as equitable as possible. What I don't do is, I have a responsibility to all of the citizens in all of the districts. So you try to make sure that there is a robust representation of your non-p patrol entities in those areas as well, because we know that there are certain districts, Western District, Eastern District, Southwest, the Southern, are historically going to have more violence than others. So they're getting a level of response probably throughout the year that other districts aren't getting. So sometimes in the beginning of this year, because there has been a hyper-focus in the Southeast, there may be an intentional push for the Southeast. But trust me, when it comes to violent crimes, where we're having the issues at in those main four or five districts, there's always some idea of some enforcement entity over there to provide that level of response and presence that you're asking about.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
I'll have a couple more questions before we move on, and I understand some of my colleagues have some as well. One of the things I noted in the citywide crime overview was the homicides and shootings and the trends that we're seeing thus far this year. And I noted that the Northern District and Northeastern District stood out amongst homicides. And then among shootings, the Northern District, Northwestern District, and the Eastern District seem to stand out as well. I'm curious what's going on there. And I ask that question because historically, I would say the Northern District, Northeastern District, and probably Northwestern District probably have historically like less crime than other parts of the city. So what's going on there? Why are we seeing that trend?
Yep. So of course I can't speak on open investigations, but what I will say is, you know, what we do look at is trends in each district. We have noticed that the Northern District is one of the districts that has been showing an increase, them in the Northwest. Once we identify that a pattern is going on, we look for, working with our partners in MONC, is we look at each and every case, no matter where the district is, if it's a group member involved, which driving it? Is it a road rage incident? Is it something that was, you know, inside of a house, inside of a vehicle? So we have noted that the Northern District has had an increase to the point that they were, the Northern District was just up last Thursday for ComStat because of that. So we broke down each individual case, why they were there, what was leading it. Is there any connectivity going on in that district? So trust me, it's not lost on us when we see that because it is an anomaly. It's not normally for the Northern District to lead us in violence. So we have definitely been looking for that. We have not seen much going on as far as connectivity, as far as group member involved incidents. But we're still kicking the tires on a lot of that, figuring out why the Northern District is having this uptick in violence.
Yeah. You know, one of the thoughts that I had is thinking about the expansion of GPRS and noting that the Northern District and Northeastern District do not yet have GPRS stood up. And I'm curious if that's relevant at all. And maybe you can't answer that for, because we're talking about so few at the moment. So if you can't, please do not. I don't want to compromise any investigations. But just a thought that I had as I was looking through the districts.
No, so far as, as far as the GPRS model, this is something that we've undertaken for all non-districts. Although, you know, GPRS technically is only in four and expanding to the fifth district with the Southern District right now. I myself was at the last GPRS Violence Review last Wednesday. And there is an expectation of every district commander to be at the GPRS meetings. There was a model that we set in reference to identifying if the incident is group member involved. And then at that point, we look at a prioritization, if it is group member involved, whether it's a GPRS district or not, it will be adopted. So that's going to be the mindset for the districts going forward. Staffing is what staffing is, and I wish that we could create a GVE team in every district, but unfortunately we can't. But the idea is that the group member involved model stands. So we use that as the metrics of identifying which cases should be involved and tracked and prioritized. So each district, although they may not have its own GV unit, is brought into the same process of hierarchy and prioritization. So I want everyone to feel comfortable that, look, if it meets the criteria based on prioritizing it, it will be adopted by our GPRS unit and will be investigated that way.
Got it. Thank you.
Stephanie, I mean, if you can go on any.
I think that was great.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it, Deputy Commissioner. Councilman Blanchard.
Going back to the proactivity data. So I remember seeing last spring, I think the mayor's office had made an announcement about trying to hit, I think it was 10,000 traffic stops over a six-month period or something to that effect. I remember there was a goal number to get over a certain period of time. And there was an article in the Banner, I think like two months into it. And I don't remember seeing anything else past that. Is there, is there still any intentional effort around, like any goals on traffic stops? Or has it moved away from that and why?
So the police commissioner's motto is traffic stops, traffic stops, traffic stops. The focus being that, look, it's twofold, right? Officer out there, they're engaged, people see the lights, people see the car stops in the tributary streets, the main thoroughfares. It's in these car stops that individuals who have warrants, individuals who are in possession of firearms are then arrested. So we know that when our car stops are up, most likely the violence is down for those days. So each district is expected to run some kind of traffic initiatives on multiple shifts because we know the impact that these traffic stops have. And I think also for all of the community meetings that I attend, it's a prerequisite made by our community members. They're tired of seeing people run red lights and stop signs and speed and cause accidents. So, you know, there's nothing more embarrassing than, you know, hearing a story of someone running a red light and the police car staying right there and not engaging, where then I have to explain there's also a balance of if the officer involves, gets engaged with everything that they could stop somebody for, then the call for service that they're responding to, they'll never get there. But I will say that yes, it is a priority for BPD in reference to traffic stops. Each district should be running an initiative on every shift.
Okay. And so I've, at least in my district, I've certainly heard that sentiment regarding foot patrol, like wanting, wanting to see proactive presence out and walk around the neighborhoods and whatnot. I have not noticed as much of that sentiment on the traffic stop side. Could be the specifics of the district or maybe I just haven't heard it. But I guess when we had had the opportunity, I had attended a CRC meeting last spring and when they, the then captain in the Southern District had mentioned the numbers, it was, I mean, a really pretty low, I think it was like a 1% of the stops involved an individual with a warrant or an illegal gun or something like that. And I guess, maybe this is a follow-up question for me to ask and learn more about, but I'm a little, you know, I could, if someone is blatantly being dangerous in traffic, that's, that's an obvious thing and I'm in no ways questioning that. But, but allotting resources to that and who gets, what type of individual gets stopped in a more discretionary case is something that I guess I'd be concerned about. And the balancing resources between traffic stops versus foot patrols and other forms of proactive measures is something that I would like to learn more about, how the department thinks about that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. And to piggyback on that, in conversations with the majors and that represent the eighth district, that was an initiative that was talked about, traffic stops. And while talking about the traffic stops, one of the reasons for traffic stops was the broken taillight. We talked through it and got to a understanding. But once again, when you hear broken taillight, it just makes everyone a little queasy because we know that that was used as a prerequisite just to stop any and everyone, whether it was broken or not. You guys had a program that you were working with the Baltimore Ravens. And in both discussions, no one knew where it stood. So I would just like to make a committee request to have an update on, on that, when that program is going to be reinstated. And just all the particulars, because I think it's important that if we are going to stop people for something like a broken taillight, that we should also have the programs available for folks to be able to have those fixed.
Just to clarify, so you'd like an update on?
Sorry.
Don't scream.
Really close. A status update on the partnership or reinstatement of the partnership between the Baltimore Ravens and Baltimore City Police for constituents to have their broken taillights fixed.
I was just actually looking back at our community policing and that initiative is still happening in some areas. But I'm happy to follow up with you and let you know where and where the status of the program stands. And I do know from your and I meeting about the example that we talked through. And so I understand your point.
Awesome. Thank you. Any further questions for the Deputy Commissioner? Deputy, I understand you may have to run. We're going to move on to the second part of our meeting. And I'm going to hand off to MONC to tell us about the school-based violence intervention program.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Conway, Vice Chair Blanchard, and members of the committee. My name is Stephanie Mavronis and I serve as the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. We were asked to provide an update on the status of our school-based violence intervention pilot program. This is a pilot that is active in four of our high schools. Let me make sure I got this. Okay. So just starting with an overview, this pilot is in collaboration with Baltimore City Schools and community-based organizations who are uniquely suited to serve their respective school communities. The goal is to promote a positive school and community environment by addressing violence through a coordinated approach, which may include conflict mediation, youth development, and other wraparound services. These are the four schools that are a part of the pilot program between MONC and City Schools, Mervo, Carver, Digital Harbor, and Edmondson Westside. Some of you may remember the announcement that we made when we officially launched back in mid-December. One note, you'll see up there next to Edmondson Westside, a note that we will be making an announcement for another community-based organization who will be serving in that capacity, Youth Ambassador Leadership Academy, who we previously announced still will very much be involved in the school, just playing a different kind of role. But we want to ensure that we have an organization selected with the capacity to carry this work forward. I know we literally were just meeting with the principal earlier today before this hearing and so looking forward to making sure that's back in the mix. So our goals for this initiative, the program emphasis is on working with youth, school administrators, and families to shift communal norms about the acceptability of violence, creating a positive school climate, strengthening problem-solving and conflict management, strengthening students' academic performance, and providing counseling for those at the highest risk of violence. And so we understand that incidents that happen outside of a school, in community, can easily travel into a school and vice versa. And so making sure that we're building effective relationships in our schools and that we're able to take a proactive, preventative stance where need be. And so just to move on to the staffing model, and I'll cover a little bit about the budget breakdown. The way that our pilot is structured, there's a program supervisor, two intervention specialists, and eight identified student ambassadors, two per grade level in each of the school pilots. These are the primary staff who are collaborating on a daily basis with the school administration, with our teachers, with MONC, with each other as community-based organizations to figure out the best path forward. We have secured a good amount of funding for the initial phase of this pilot. The $700,000 from Wells Fargo and National League of Cities supported the contracts with the movement team and the peace team respectively in this first phase of the work. We also received some funding this year in the state's allocation for Safe Streets and related initiatives, which we'll be putting towards this program. And then specifically for Digital Harbor, we have a multi-year commitment to support that initiative through the Casino Local Impact Fund, which will help support the pilot in that school. And are also looking at some other resources we have to make sure that we can continue the pilot and also evaluate the pilot, which is going to be a key part of our work as we move forward. At present, the total allocated per school is $250,000, with the bulk of that going towards supporting the staff, stipends for the student ambassadors, and some funds additionally for other kinds of programmatic activities, development opportunities, things like that. And so before I turn it over to Arnetta Shelton, who is our Chief of Community Violence Intervention, this falls within her portfolio, to talk a little bit about how we measure success. Just want to say that, you know, we're continuing to seek funding for the initiative and are looking forward to being able to share more data during this presentation and subsequent presentations with the council. But without further ado, let me turn it over to Arnetta.
Thank you again, Director, and thanks, everyone, for having us here on today. So in this slide, you'll see for the measure of success.
Can you state your name?
Oh, sure, sure. Arnetta Shelton, Chief of Community Violence Intervention. Thank you. So jumping right into it, our team is looking specifically at key performance metrics, letting us know the number of students that are engaged with our CBOs through intervention, lunch bunches, restorative conversations, and the home visits. And we're in change, seeing a difference in how students are handling altercations. In this pilot, we're focusing on a number of incidents, the mediations, and the types of incidents repeated, the demographics as well. And we're looking at collaboration, working in collaboration with the city schools to monitor the grades, the attendance, suspensions, case managing outcomes, gathering information with our school climate survey on perceived safety, inclusion and support of the school environment. And we're tracking the student engagement with our student ambassadors and peer-led initiatives. Next slide. And so we're also seeing a positive shift in the school cultures. For this pilot, we're finding as students engage with our CBOs, violent incidents are decreasing. Students and families are being connected immediately to resources. Based on the data implications, we are aiming to expand our program capacity and explore additional funding opportunities, as Director already mentioned, for school-based program. Yep. We're also tracking incidents at schools so we can help measure efficacy of the program. And so in collaboration with our CBOs and our data team, this is some of the information we are tracking. So this is the incident location, if it happened in the school building, on school grounds, off school grounds, were there weapons involved, gun, knife, or other student repeated involved? So if there was multiple incidents that the students have been involved, the number of incidents, the location. Okay. The location. Oh, Lord. I can't read them.
Thank you.
The number of incidents, the location, and then looking down at our demographics for the students, the grade, their race and ethnicity, race and gender, and the language. So the incident types are also being tracked. Homicides, if it was a mass shooting, a non-fatal shooting, property destruction, robbery, if it was sexual starts, assault, stabbing, theft, threatening behavior, or verbal altercation, weapon possessions. So these are the metrics in which we are tracking. So these are the metrics in which we are tracking. The next slide. This is a snapshot of the data system. So we are building it. It is a work in progress. We are still going back and forth with this tracking system to make sure that it does what we need it to do. And this is in Apricot. And we are looking with our CBOs to kind of finalize and make improvements to match the work that we are doing within the schools. And the next slide. So the following slides show what we are seeing for this pilot so far. At Digital Carver and Murvo is what you'll see. And as you look at the data points, just note that for the mediations, these are sessions involving trained staff, mediators, who facilitate the discussions between the conflicting students and helping them to express their feelings and work with mutual understanding. The interventions are proactive measures being taken by staff to address and mitigate potential conflicts before they escalate. We're doing home visits and the staff members are visiting students' homes who engage with families, discuss concerns, and foster cooperative relationships between the school and the home. We're doing restorative conversations. And these are discussions emphasizing on growth accountability, respectful resolutions. And the students collaborate to set high standards and behavior and responsibility. And for the lunch bunches, these are informal gatherings, providing students with a safe space to socialize during their lunch, encouraging friendships and peer support, fostering supportive community for the students, and creating a welcome and open environment in general. At Digital, there is a large Latino population, as you know, and we have been able to engage with the students and families through the language interpretation sessions. And they're helping the families to recognize and understand. It feels supportive, fostering a welcome environment where they feel secure in voicing their concerns. This next slide is our data in particular for Carver for the month of December. The CBOs are recording data and logging it into Apricot. And then on the... I'm waiting so you can look at it. Okay. And then on the next slide, we're currently in the process of continuing to build out the data infrastructure, supporting the CBO's data entry. And while it is the early stage of this program and the data, we are seeing promising outcomes. And when we go to this next slide, it just kind of paints the story of our success so far. Our principals are, and you can't read it, so I'm going to highlight some points. And our principals are noticing a difference in the atmosphere of their schools and early data suggests that our school-based intervention workers are having a positive impact on school safety. And so Principal Mavis Jackson, Digital, suspensions have been reduced by 50% compared to last year, a direct result of the movement team's proactive involvement. By intervening early, the movement team has facilitated more restorative conversations, mediations, and preventive discussions whenever students sense potential conflict. We're also seeing a growing number of students reaching out to the movement team for guidance before issues escalate. Their work has been instrumental in fostering a positive culture for the school and climate. This positive impact is reflected in our improved school-wide attendance and the movement team builds trust and forms meaningful relationships with the students. Especially important for us, our largest demographic, which is 75% of the student body being male. The next quote is Principal Rivers citing, "It has truly been a blessing to work with the School-Based Violence Intervention Program and the movement team. Their support has allowed me to focus more on the instructional needs of our students, knowing that I have a strong, reliable partner addressing important community concerns and climate." And lastly, Eric Brown, Senior Executive Director of the Peace Team. "The intervention program has been incredibly effective so far, from greeting students each morning to providing them with a safe, calm space during the school day. We are seeing real progress. We've been able to motivate them daily and mediate conflicts before they escalate." And these are just a few of the success stories that we have to date. The pilot thus far has truly proven to work. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Mark, to provide additional insights on how we have integrated our victim services lane as well into the school-based violence program.
Thank you, Arnetta. Appreciate it. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Mark Mason, Chief of Victim Services for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Wanted to speak on the extended partnership. We wanted to add substance to our partnership with the schools. So the principals actually see, not only are they getting the school-based violence intervention, but they're getting all the supports that Monty can offer. Stabilization, victim services. We've had two referrals sent over where we've served an assault victim, 19-year-old that was referred from the movement team, as well as a mom that actually needed supports with relocation due to victimizations in the community. So I think it actually opens the door for us to actually reach another underserved population, which are young people. So a lot of young people, we've found, don't really share their needs with, you know, just random people. So having these partnerships with the CBOs, you have credible messages in the school that actually can get to the young people. The young people know that they can, you know, entrust their supports or their needs with someone, and then that's how we actually get connected to them. So I'll turn it back over to my Director.
Thanks, Mark. I think this is our last slide. So just wanted to outline a few of the next steps. Arnetta, do you want to start us off and then I'll take...
Sure. As far as our next steps for the Violence Intervention Program, we're finalizing our...
Please use the mic.
Oh, sorry. Yes. As far as our next steps for School-Based Violence Intervention Program, we are finalizing our data metrics to measure the pilot outcomes and success. As mentioned, this is a work in progress. Our team is working in collaboration currently with the peace team and the movement team, as well as Baltimore City Public Schools. We're continuing our staff development and training with our CBO teams at each of the schools. We're identifying gaps and working on ways to kind of improve with our Apricot system. So as we develop and advance in that space, we'll continue training as well. And this month began our regular site visit. We actually started already for the month of February, our regular site visits at the schools and providing technical support as well. Hosting parent information sessions will start to take place this month to introduce the parents and the students to the program and the student ambassador program conducted by our CBOs and Monty. Back to you, Director.
Thank you. And just to close out, I mentioned a few of these things earlier, so I won't repeat. But just wanted to say that one of the key things that we'll be doing is identifying the evaluation partner. We know some of the preliminary data. It's great to see, but we want to make sure that we understand what happens with this model as we move forward, how can we scale it, how should we scale it? I think it also gets to the heart of something that I heard Councilman Glover say earlier today, making sure that we're finding additional ways to ensure those who need services, those who need resources right now can get them in real time. And so to that end, you just heard Mark from our victim services team speak. We're officially rolling out the referral process within the school-based pilot just to make sure that process for additional support is seamless, we can track it, and make sure there is follow-through. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. And I'm really happy to see this program off the ground. I'm looking to learn a lot from it. Of course, the whole purpose and exercise of us doing this is, you know, as we pilot these programs and try to assess whether or not these are things that we want to expand and do more of, it's always really important that we're able to sort of assess our outcomes. One of the things I was hoping to see, but we don't really have here, is some more hard metrics on outcomes. And I think that part of that is, we have to start with a baseline. So it sounds like we're still finalizing those pieces. But I think one of the things we'll need to figure out, one way or another, is the baseline from which we're going to measure progress from that point forward. So if we're looking at, for instance, and I'm not sure that this is necessarily the answer, given we're talking about young people and a lot of the activity is not logged as a crime. But, for instance, we might say, look at Park One crimes in the area. And while that may be helpful, I still don't think that necessarily captures some of the issues that we're trying to get to. And so I don't know how to answer that question. This... Yeah, and I know you guys are probably struggling with that right now, which is why we don't have some of those metrics yet. I will say, I'm very happy to see the incident tracking system. I think that'll be really, really helpful in seeing incidents, how they come in, how we handle them, and what then happens after. But I think as an exercise for the council, you know, what we're going to have to then figure out at some point, and we've talked about this for GVRS, we've talked about this for other programs, we'll have to make a budget decision on whether or not we want to continue to fund a program like this or expand the program. And it really comes down to those outcomes. So you can speak to that if you... Yeah.
Just, I think we'll definitely take that back. I think we're seeing some preliminary data right now, like when we hear largely anecdotally right now from the principals about reductions in in-school suspensions, expulsions, those kind of things. That's some good initial outcome data. But I hear what you're saying and we'll make sure we develop that fully for the next time.
Yeah, and as I was sort of reviewing the materials before this meeting, I was thinking suspensions, I was thinking detentions were appropriate. It might be any number of things that sort of give us a sense for how young people are coping within the school system. You know, I don't know if we track, for instance, fights in schools or things like that. I'm not sure what we currently track. But it sometimes is easiest to start there. And then we might want to beg the question on whether or not there are things that we don't track today that might be helpful to really get a sense for whether or not we're changing behavior for young people in schools. So I will... I'm going to hand off to Councilman Blanchard and then to Councilman Glover.
Yeah. So I think I've got two comments and then a question. The first comment, as you guys know and as Chair Conway knows, I am a really big believer in this program, at least what I've seen preliminarily so far. I, you know, Digital's in my district. I've coached football there for the last three years. I had the opportunity to shadow the movement team at Digital two Fridays ago. I can say that the atmosphere at the school felt better than what we've seen over the last couple of years. And Digital started, I think, in April of last school year, so had a bit of a, maybe a bit more time on this. But I know that speaking data and all this is preliminary and whatnot, and we got to keep an eye on it. But at Digital, I think it was, when we were looking at the end of December, it had been 99 suspensions the previous year-to-date, down to 67 year-to-date. Attendance was up a couple percentage points above the citywide improvement that we're seeing. And then I just had a really good sit-down with Major Bennett of the Southern District, who is not with Monty and doesn't have a dog in this fight. And I had asked him kind of the data questions I had floated to Monty about, hey, can you look at neighborhood crime numbers during year-to-date and the previous year-to-date while the movement team had been there? And like juvenile arrests were down, crime numbers overall were down. The heat map was really reduced in the footprint around the school. I should get it from him and send over the digital copy to you guys. I had a couple of questions and that they're doing a follow-up on their end. But he was, I think, more bullish than I was at the end of the conversation about the effectiveness of the program. When you look and you say, oh, you've got, you're spending $300,000 a year on a program that's close to cutting suspensions in half, it's improving attendance, it's like the youth, sorry, juvenile crime in the surrounding neighborhood was down, like, I think more than half in the period they were looking at? Like, I mean, it's like, it's an obvious investment from my perspective at this point. And as I, you know, I'll ask what I asked y'all about when Director Mavronas and I had the opportunity to meet a week ago. But, you know, understanding what the, what does the, you know, in an ideal world where money, in a magical world where money isn't an option, what does that... What does next year look like for y'all? Are there, is it expanding at the current schools versus is it, is it, you know, expanding to other schools? Keeping the same footprint at the current schools, expanding to other schools? And that's my, that was my question for y'all, is what does next year ideally look like? But before I ask that, I guess I'll just kind of briefly say towards the number. I think Arnetta is right, that the data is probably low and it's probably just they're doing God's work and they're not thinking to input these things. I get the impression that they have, as you mentioned, there's a large Hispanic minority at Digital. Two of the movement team members there are Hispanic and the language and the interpretation, translation thing is a big piece. I got the impression that they do that, they both do that probably at least once a day. And so my hunch is that the numbers are probably, the numbers look good, but they're probably higher than even what we're seeing. And once we kind of get that, just make sure that they're remembering to do that as well. But so to my question of, you know, what ideally does school year 2026 look like for this program?
Sure. So I think we will want to have the benefit of at least one full year of implementation in order to do an effective evaluation. So knowing that for some of our schools, we started off, you know, two months into the school year, my expectation would be that we're holding this current pilot formation through the 2526 school year as well. And then having the benefit of evaluating that effectively over the two years. But we meet consistently with city schools. I think we'll want to continue to look at the data and have conversations with the council and others about if there are other schools that would be particularly good candidates as we're thinking about expansion. But at this point, it's a little too early to say exactly how we'll make those decisions. But we will want to have the benefit of that evaluation. We will want to have the benefit of data from the 2526 school year to help inform that.
Okay. Thank you, Director. And I'll just kind of briefly say that, you know, every school is going to be different. The different CBOs are going to be different. Maybe it's working particularly good at Digital for a variety of reasons. I could postulate a couple of them. But my hunch is that, like, when we get to the end of this school year and we see the data, we're going to say, wait, we're spending this much to get these results, at least in this case, and there might be some demands to not wait until school year 2027, which will be maybe hard timing budgetarily, right? But just something I encourage you guys to consider.
First of all, and I think, again, happy to have those conversations. I think you're right about the demand. We hear it already. People who hear about this program on one school, they're like, when can it come to mind? And so we want to make sure we're doing that, of course, in a responsible way, letting the data help drive us there. But I think, you know, we're seeing the successes that we're seeing, not only because of the work that's happening inside the school with this initiative, but you talked about some of the neighborhood-based efforts. We're seeing the power of a more collaborative approach. And so I know what, you know, Dr. Brooks and her team will share around safe passage. That's absolutely a part of the data that we're seeing in the outcomes. And I'm really glad to hear your observations from Shadowing as well.
Yeah. So I'll note, you guys hit on it, to my point earlier, all the things that you noted, Councilman, that you've been seeing anecdotally or sort of with your own eyes, from your personal experience, if there are ways for us to capture those pieces and sort of set those as the standard, especially as, you know, we consider potentially expanding the program, just getting those things off brakes before we roll out so that we have a strong sense before we walk into the metrics which we're measuring ourselves against. I'm going to hand off to Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that, you know, all of us here are aware of the great stabilization you guys do at Monty. And to see how you work closely with Dr. Brooks and her team is tremendous. I also want to give kudos before I forget, you know, Rick, I thought I seen him early. Rick and Mark. Oh, gosh. But I think Rick was here earlier. But, you know, just, so there's been times where, you know, oh, all right, there. See, you matched with the chair. I didn't know you was back there, bro. So it's been times where, you know, I reached out to Monty. And these are success stories that I think don't get heard, you know, the community doesn't hear. And that's why it's important that we communicate with each other holistically as a team, because communication is very, very important, right? So when I reach out to you guys and I'm asking for returning citizens to get information or housing, like, at the drop of a dime, the resource that you guys have, we was able to get individuals coming home from prison, like, right away, like, just hit the street, and it was more of a, you know, call Tony, call Tony. So I get a phone... So I get a phone call, and it's like, man, I just came home from prison. I got my bag. I have my tennis shoes, just got off the bus, blase, blase. And they telling me to give you a call. What other resource do you have for me? And immediately, it was Monty. Because the first time dealing with Monty, they was able to help this individual get housing, the mental health issues that they had, that were challenging, that was facing. They was able to get them that help. And now, you know, I see this individual, and this was back during Thanksgiving. This individual's working now, you know? And he's now working the streets of Baltimore's corners. You know, he's working for a company, and he's helping to provide for themselves and hopefully, one day for a family. But these are the success stories that I want to mention coming from out of Monty, and why it's very, very important that we continue to keep funding programs like Monty, because the moment, I mentioned it early on, the moment they lose funding, we're going to lose some children and we're going to use some adults. We're going to lose them. But by these programs being in place, and what I'm asking is that, do we know or is it in the budget already to where we got to look forward? And I know some of your funding is coming federally, right? We're getting some federal funds. And, you know, we don't know how it's going to look moving forward as far as when it comes to federal funds coming to the city of Baltimore. Do you have in mind what we can do to help make sure that we continue to stabilize the programs that you guys have within the Monty organization to ensure that we continue to have those programs available for individuals such as the ones coming home from prison and trying to get themselves activated back to life, you know, ordinary life? Do you have in mind, like, how that's going to look? Or is this something already in place for those possibilities?
Thank you for that and appreciate what you've shared about the team. I think I'm grateful every day to work with a team of really committed public servants who are willing to push aside whatever they have going on to make sure that whoever we're serving, that family, that child, that person returning home gets a level of service that they deserve and they should be able to expect from their city government. And so we're going to continue to do that work and just appreciate you lifting that up. As far as funding is concerned, we've been doing the work of post-ARPA planning pretty much since the ARPA allocation was made to Monty, knowing that that's a one-time funding source and we needed to build sustainability. So we've done a great job planning for the future when it comes to making sure we have the staffing in place to maintain current level of service. That's something that the mayor and the administration have also supported on, beginning with this year's budget. And our inter-agency agreement with the Recovery Office goes through the end of 2025. So we have the ability for some of our big contracts, thinking about the intensive life coaching contract with Yap that supports G V R S. That's one that we're going to be able to continue spending on through the end of the ARPA period. But when you bring up things like reentry, I mean, the work that we're doing right now, we have one reentry coordinator and a team of staff that's willing to pitch in. We know we certainly have enough work to go around in terms of people returning home from incarceration that we need more than one reentry coordinator. So when we're thinking about how to make sure we can actually meet the need, there is certainly going to need to be further discussion about how we can grow our capacity to serve and meet the problem head-on. So something I'd love to talk to you and your colleagues more about, just what that funding picture looks like, where we're feeling really confident moving forward, and where we may need some partnership to ensure we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Just want to let you know, I've had conversations with the President, seeing, you know, many of my colleagues along with the President. What I had asked the President is that we kind of go on a tour of see what is exactly what's going on. I mean, I know best making phone calls. Some of my colleagues may know just as well, but some of them may not. But I think that it's important that we go out and see the work that you guys are doing firsthand, because I've seen it, but I need others to see it as well. So we can set that up to make sure we make a visit. I've had some conversations with the Chair in here in reference to even visiting some of the Safe Street sites and things of that nature, just so we can let them know that, you know, we got a pulse in this team. We're all in together. We're not just leaving you out there, but we're doing this together as a team. So if we can coordinate whatever kind of way to make that happen, I greatly appreciate it. Like I said again, I had conversations with the President already about it, also with the Chair about it. And I just want to make sure that we move forward with those acts. So again, thank you for everything that you guys have done. Mark, Rick, man, thank you guys. And I know sometimes, man, I could be a headache. I'm like a nightmare you can't wake up from sometimes. It's only because I'm passionate about what it is that I do, like, and this is my city. When you born and raised here and you've been around the people, you love the people, you want to make sure that you're making changes because these people give you an opportunity to help make changes in the neighborhood. Let's want to make sure that we're doing it. So again, thank you all, everybody. Thank you all for partnering and doing the work that you do, because we really, really need it, and I see it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Mavronis. Councilman Glover took part of the question that I was going to ask in terms of the ARPA cliff. And again, thank you for the good work that you all have done specifically this last year, where we saw, again, a really historic reduction in violence, both homicides, non-fatal shootings, and most Part I crime categories. So appreciate the thoughtful work that you all have been doing. Shift slightly from what Councilman Glover was asking. I want to talk about the federal government and the shift in the administration. We know that under President Biden, there was a office of gun violence. There was a lot of support from the federal government for some of the work that your office was doing. And there was sort of an alignment of priorities. Without overstating the case, I think this may be a different approach that this administration takes to the work of offices like Monty. I'm curious both how we are thinking about sort of positioning ourselves in relationship to the Trump administration, to the, you know, the Congress, to make sure that we're continuing to receive some support from the federal government for the work that we're doing. And two, I am particularly concerned about what we saw under Trump. One, which was a decline in safety for our Latino and immigrant communities, where we saw significant increase in street robberies, sort of a deterioration of connection between law enforcement and our immigrant communities, some folks going indoors and not coming out, going underground. And given that the rhetoric around mass deportations, I know is psychologically impacting the safety of our immigrant communities, I am curious how you all are thinking about supporting particularly our immigrant communities here in Baltimore in relationship with Director Rodriguez Lima and her office.
Great question. I would say, Council President, for us, we absolutely want to support the work that Mima's doing. We have a team that can specialize in doing engagement and support and also connection to a whole host of community-based providers. And so, you know, I've been clear with my team since we understood what the climate was that we were working into, that our partnership with Mima is going to be really critical as we move forward. LGBTQ affairs, and we're thinking about safety of so many communities in this climate. And so Monty stands ready to be a partner, but it's certainly an area where we need to step up our engagement and be even more actively engaged and able to offer the resources that we have to many communities, particularly where there may be some barriers right now to accessing them. So that's something that, you know, we'll continue to talk with Director Rodriguez Lima about, but it's a point well taken. And I think as we continue to keep our eyes open to what's happening in the federal picture, we also want to make sure we're doing the work locally of institutionalizing the great work that we've done so far. We want to make sure that regardless, whether we're talking at a local, state, or federal level, that we're doing everything we can to change the culture of how we work, to institutionalize our efforts, and make sure that great initiatives like the group violence reduction strategy can't just fall apart because a new administration comes in, but that we've changed the way that we're working such that it's down to a science. We understand how we're analyzing cases. We understand how we're responding, and we know how we're sustaining the delivery of services. So I guess that's my response to that right now.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First, I want to start by saying thank you, Monty, for everything that you do and have done. When you look at the historic crime drops in Baltimore, I think there's a correlation between the implementation of Monty and the work that you do holistically to change the city. And a special shout-out to Rick as well. We all know what happened at the Emerson Village Shopping Center with Deontay Dorsey unfortunately losing his life. The first person that was on the scene from the mayor's office was Rick, and the last person on the scene months later was Rick. And so he's always there. He's been, you know, pulled and pushed in many directions, and rightfully so. He has a special connection to the youth. I saw it firsthand when we actually did an assembly for all grades. I don't know how he keeps his boyish, young looks when he has so much on his plate, but please sell us the recipe, because I'm probably going to need it for the next four years. But I do want to go into the CBOs and the grants and how they're paid out. And so my first question is, and this is coming from just hearing from some CBOs, just some minor frustrations. So I think it is only right for you to explain exactly what's going on. And so the first question would be, you know, how are you guys making sure grant payments go out on time? And when organizations face long delays in getting paid, what systems are in place to track and address the issue?
So over the, I'm sorry, Chanel White, Chief of Staff for Monty. So over the past, I'd say, six months or so, we had to revisit our finance policy. Things were being done under former employees. Process were not being followed as they should have been. So as we've been working through the reconciliation process to make sure that the CBOs are aware of exactly what is needed for supporting documentation to support payouts, there has been some, I think, just a transition period on their end regarding how things were done previously that may not have been up to standard or expectations of who we are required to report to. If we're getting funds from the federal government, if we're getting from the state, private, whoever it is, we had to go back to ensure, number one, that the training was, that they received training and education on managing the grant properly. What is necessary to pay those funds out? And then explaining to them, if we're rejecting them, it's because it'll be rejected on our end if we submit them to receive the drawdown. So having that documentation is imperative. It is not a Monty thing. This is the C R F 200 code that we are following, that we are implementing, and ensuring that moving forward, getting them used to the process now so that moving forward, the payouts will come quicker. But a lot of this is dependent upon the CBO. For instance, if a payment is rejected, it's just not rejected with no follow-up. It has a detailed outline of specifically what areas need to be corrected, how they need to be corrected, and the expected time they should be corrected in and who they should reach out to, should there be any issues on their end, whether it's technology. So we've implemented over the last six months, two workday trainings or office hours, one from 12 to 1 on Mondays and one after hours from 5 to 6. So there's an opportunity if they can't make it during the 12 to 1 because they are obligated, committed, they can come to the one-after-hours from 5 to 6 P. M. This is done every week, every Monday and Wednesday. We encourage, invite, and sometimes we require the CBO fiscal representative to attend those sessions if there have been repeated multiple issues with reconciliation of the invoice process. Additionally, I am CC'd on every, if not every, almost every. So I'm tracking it. I pin them, and then I follow up and I step in where needed to offer additional assistance or guidance. If a CBO reaches out directly to myself or the program manager, I also respond and try to reconcile it, because I do understand that while there were things done previously under the direction of former leadership in our finance division that may not have been as accurate, that we have to get on the same page. We have to get up to speed. And we are doing our part to ensure that we are being good stewards of the fiscal dollars from the federal, local, state government.
Thank you. And I guess the follow-up, I'm pretty sure you just answered it, but just to make sure it's stated. Does that also include just the change requirement, changing the requirements for payment as far as like the liberals? We just heard there was this frustration about, as they would say, like, moving the goalposts about what is, what the liberals are needed in order to be paid those, in order to receive the payments? So could you just go in a little bit?
When you say deliverables, do you mean supporting documentation? Or you're talking about actual deliverables within the scope?
Deliverables within the scope would work like. So if I do X, Y, Z, you know, this is what you, this is what I am actually tasked to do in order to get, you know, said grant dollar. And then when I put the request in and it's, and I'm given the no, the explanation is you didn't do, you know, A, B, C.
Well, it's twofold. I think, number one, our CBOs, typically grassroots organizations, the people we are typically dealing with are not administratively strong in finance. They don't understand fiscal obligation, processes, policies, and procedures. So their interpretation of what is being directed to them to reconcile and submit the proper documentation may not be received the way it is presented for them to respond. So they're presenting back documentation that, again, may be inaccurate. Or, for instance, we have multiple CBOs who submit us pay summaries that are Excel documents. And we've explained to them, we need to see the logo. This is required. It's also written. You can't, because we don't know that this was actually paid out. So we either need the payroll summary showing that it could be an old Paystub, a closed-out time card. It could be something, whatever payroll system you're using, ADP, whoever, it has to be from there. If you submit that, that is approved. So yes, you are submitting a pay summary. It is not anything that is, will be accepted when we submit for our financial reporting. So I think it's just the semantics with verbiage. And they're saying, well, we submitted the pay summary. Yeah, you did, but it's an, I can create an Excel document. We're not saying that that's what you did in this instance, but we also have to ensure that we are covering Monty and the dollars that we are responsible for before we pay them out. So I think a lot of times, it's interpretation, and we do our best to make it clear to them, giving examples, making ourselves available to meet them after hours, before hours, onsite, coming to our office if need be. We've done numerous face-to-face reconciliation of invoices pending for payout. And it just depends on the CBO. So we are instituting a number of trainings, on-boardings before the grants are awarded, prior to even going into contract that we have been establishing over the past few months with new grantees moving forward. We are also reeducating and offering those, again, workday sessions, those sit-down one-on-ones if they have any questions, so that we want to make this process as quick and as smooth as possible. A lot of them were unaware of, even though it's in the contract, a clear understanding of what the contract says versus their knowledge and understanding. And a lot of times what we've seen or heard is, well, I asked my friend who got a grant from you all, and he said to do this. That's not, we can't operate like that. So just making sure that we are clear and concise, and we document everything via email. We also follow up with not just our fiscal team, but our program managers, and again, myself, to make sure that we are closing the loop, processing these out as quickly as possible.
I really appreciate that clarification and all the work that you guys are doing to make sure that folks understand what the expectations are and that they're clear and concise. I just had that concern when it was addressed to me that, you know, people weren't being paid as they should or that things were changing. And my concern was losing those CBOs. We hear about the amazing work that's being done at Digital Harbor from Councilman Blanchard. We heard at the press conference, and if you sit down and even ask him, Councilman Torrance will tell you all day about the amazing things that are happening at Calvert. And I am just personally thankful and excited that this is coming to Emerson Westside as well. And so my hope is that we're attracting more CBOs to come into the program instead of it being spread word-of-mouth by other CBOs that, you know, the quote-unquote, "the money is funny," right? And so I do appreciate that clarification and then the work, the proactive work that you guys are doing to ensure that people understand exactly what they're going into. Because as we all know, these CBOs are, their strength is with people. And sometimes it's not so much with understanding, like, the financial side. So with them, it's like, I did this, now where's the money? And I do appreciate you guys onboarding them into the process. And I do appreciate you guys onboarding them into the process, so thank you.
You're welcome. And I think as we go through, those who are already under contract previous to us implementing these things, it's been a little longer transition and again, just getting them up to speed, offering them trainings, but also sending them to resources to help them build their administrative back lawn support so that as they engage, not just with us at Monty, but whoever, our goal is to get them to a place where they're not receiving negative findings for being able to do the work, hands-on work in the community, but not being able to fulfill the obligations administratively on that end. So we want to attract more CBOs. We can't do this work without them. And having that trust and knowing that we can trust them to do the work, but they also will be compensated for the work that they're doing is a two-way street. So we are prioritizing that highly. We have been and we will continue to do so.
I want to make a request. I want to note also in the bill file you guys will see online, we got testimony for our first hearing from Turnaround about exactly this issue. And for risk of going down the rabbit hole, I want to make sure, one, to just make you guys aware of it, it would be deeply appreciated if you guys could reply to them on the issues that they brought forward. I know prompt payment of invoices has been a challenge for many a number of reasons. We've had issues in the past and we've rectified those issues in the past, but they come up again and I suspect it's a big part of our system and how we, what we require out of these invoices. So, you know, I think this is an opportunity for us to look again at our process and figure out what we can do to properly educate or get ahead of the problems or frequently asked questions, opportunities so that folks that make these mistakes time and time and time and time again can help us inform future relationships on how not to make the same mistakes because not only does it burn their time and their money, which they often don't have much of, but it also burns our time and money. So, yeah, if...
Mr. Chair, are you going to share the letter with us?
The letter's in the bill file.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I can give you the letter right now if you'd like it to save you the search.
And I've personally been in contact with Turnaround over the last few days to rectify. Some things were out of Monty's control as the system had switched over from city payables when they were under contract previously to workday. Some, I guess between the transmission, this predates me, but it looked like some things were not properly recorded or tracked. So we have to go through to untangle the web to figure it out, which is taking some time. And we've also had new transition within our finance lane. We've had, we recently transitioned in a new chief of finance in addition to a finance operations manager who's been there for about a year now, who's developing some processes to better track these things that we need to change. So as they're coming up and we are understanding where it is, sometimes the issues that predate us are taking a little longer to rectify. And that's, and we're explaining that in the processes.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mean to suggest at all that Monty is the problem necessarily. I think we have a pretty complicated system for paying invoices and I think a lot of our CBOs that don't have, you know, significant sophisticated financial systems are able to navigate it easily. And what that ends up being is, you know, they may have, for them, very sizable grants or relationships with the city that don't get paid on time. And as a former nonprofit executive director, I can tell you, you can easily sync a nonprofit with cash flow. So, and it's interesting, I think Turnaround is a particular case here with all the pressures at the federal level around DEI efforts. We're going to see a lot of our partners under significant pressure from the federal level and they're going to be counting on us. And what we don't want to do is make this process any more complicated from a cash flow perspective. So just, yeah, if you guys could help work through whatever issues we're having there. And I think Ty Lord, this might be something that we can roll up to the city administrator and try to figure out if there are things that we can do to ease that process. I know we made a number of changes and I'm going down the rabbit hole, so I'll stop here to city buy and otherwise workday that should have helped us here, but we're still having those pain points and would love to figure out how we resolve those.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, and it's the need to balance, obviously, as you said, the support for the nonprofits, but also we have a fiduciary duty to make sure that the funds are being spent appropriately.
Exactly.
We cannot approve dispersment for funds outside of the guardrails that the funding comes with. And like I said, some of these issues are very niche and Monty could provide offline, you know, more detail there, but certainly I'll escalate it up to the CAL around some process improvements.
I appreciate that. Mr. President?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do just want to be clear, you know, I think many of the challenges that nonprofits and other vendors have with getting paid by the city are of our making. And so I just want to level set a little bit. You are absolutely right. We would never want to step outside of the bounds and do anything that is not, a nonprofit doesn't have capacity to support. But let's also be clear that I think there is a well-documented history of folks not getting paid on time, folks being multiple years late on payments. And so just to the chair's point, I just don't want to conflate different conversations because I think it's really important for his point as we step into this new reality where there is going to be a lot of pressure on places like Baltimore to walk back from some of our commitments around racial justice and around economic justice and otherwise that we stand in the gap and just make sure we are being our best selves and implementing our own best practices. And again, I know the city administrator is working very hard on improving and modernizing our systems, but when it comes to procurement, when it comes to paying vendors, I think it is really important that in this next four-year cycle, we are on top of it and I know Monty's going to be a great partner in that as well.
I had one more thought that I forgot to make in my initial round of questionings and it actually ties to the conversation that Councilman Glover brought up earlier and also this sort of conversation around resources that we briefly had. And namely, right now, we're relying very heavily on ARPA funding and that's coming to a close. So one of the things we'll have to evaluate is not only how we fund this program going forward, but how we fund the resource needs that we connect folks to. So if we're, you know, if the intervention is to connect said young person to a mediation program or we do the mediation, fine, or if there are other things that we're connecting them to and any other social services that we use as partners that we may need in order to effectively run this program. So one of the thoughts I had from a data perspective is that sort of handoff, who are we handing off to? And I know we captured that today with GPRS. We have logs like that for GPRS. I wonder if we could consider that for this as well.
And this, I know we talked about the victim services referral process. We showed you some of the participant structure in Apricot of what that looks like when we're actually inputting the data, similar to what we built out for GPRS and our victim services team. We should also have a unified system for a school base that should show the handoffs, that should show where, if we're receiving certain referrals, where it came from, who it went to, what service providers they were connected with, what services they were delivered. And so those are things I expect as we get additional data, we can share out on too.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And, you know, when we had that conversation, we talked about all the other partners in the room that would probably be looking at those same resources in different cases. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to work across the aisle and across the divisions and even with the school system as they're thinking about who they refer folks to so that we can keep track of where the needs are and the kinds of things that our young people repeatedly show as needs. I have no further questions for you guys. I want to thank you guys. I'm really looking forward to this program and how it kind of plays out over time. I think it'll be telling for us as we continue to think about the CVI model and the whole ecosystem. So thank you guys. Any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to Safe Passage. Dr. Brooks, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Cohen, Chair Conway, and committee members. I am Dr. Brooks, Executive Director, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and I have other members here of my team and we will be presenting this afternoon on Safe Passage. So just a little historical background on Safe Passage. It actually began as a pilot, spring of 2023 in partnership with Monty and other agencies to include City Schools, Mayor's Office of Community Affairs, MTA, as well as the Mayor's Office of African-American Engagement. And it really, and MTA, and it was really a focus on bus hubs. So it began at Mondamin, also with Mondamin Management, and State Center. And it was really to focus on upticks and incidents that were happening at those sites. From there, from school year '23, '24, we actually began to collect additional qualitative and quantitative data with a stronger partnership with City Schools and MOCFS when MOCFS began to be the lead. And what we were hearing collectively from school leaders, from parents, from young people, from community members, is that young people felt safe in the school buildings, but it was the traveling to and from schools. And so I participated on a number of ride-alongs with Major Coleman. I had to promise my team that I would not do any jumpouts. I did not always keep my promise, but we really did that to be able to really focus on where we were seeing some incidents take place. And so from there, we were able to fully launch Safe Passage at the beginning of school year '24, '25. And so what it actually is, is that each school day, we have community partners, five community partners, where each of the community-based partners are having four to six staff members at specific locations. And they are able to monitor the zones, the young people engaged with community as well as the school leaders to make sure that young people are feeling safe. The next slide really talks about this collaboration because it's a true collaboration. We could not do this without City Schools, Chief Shorter, and BPD, Deputy Commissioner Jones, Deputy Chief of the Community Policing, because the NCOs are definitely a part of this work. We heard earlier about when Deputy Commissioner shared about the uptick of North Face. And so an example is that they immediately sent me that alert. I was able to send that information immediately out to our community-based organizations so that they could be aware during Safe Passage so that they would be mindful of that. But then also, school police was alerted on that. So there's a constant communication. I want to also just note that the really good thing about this is that the same community-based organizations that we're using for our Safe Passage are our school-based violence community-based partners. And so any incidents that may be taking place in the schools, they're able to report out and share with those that are on the street before school and after school to have that constant communication. We have received our funding through the family. They have been able to continue to support this work and even to help us to continue to expand. The next slide. So when we came before you in September, we were able to share that we had started at particular schools. So we began the initiative at Patterson, the Northern Campus, which was Reginald F. Lewis Achievement and Success, Digital Harbor, Achieve, excuse me, ACE, Carver, Frederick Douglas, which is at Northwestern High School, Edmondson, and Murvo. Since that time, we've been able to increase to not just after school at some schools, but also in the morning. So we're able to also have Patterson has AM and PM, so they're there in the morning and in the afternoon. The same with the Northern Campus. Digital Harbor is both now in the morning and in the afternoon as well as Carver and Murvo. And this is all based upon data that we're going to show you later in slides. We've also been able to have some additional schools that we were able to provide additional support to. And so we were already going to provide additional support based upon data to Dunbar and to NAF. Once the incident took place, we were able to expedite that, working very closely with the school leader, to determine where those points of contact would need to be to be able to support the school. We were also able to institute Safe Passage at Ben Franklin and at Walter P. Carter, our very first KDA8 school. I want to also talk about when we actually go into a school to provide support, and I'll give an example at Walter P. Carter. We worked very closely with the faculty. We attended the faculty meeting with the CBO to answer any questions the faculty may have had. We participated in the school community engagement meeting with the families to answer any questions that they may have so that they were really clear on what Safe Passage was and what it was not. We talked about the collaboration even prior to it starting, and Chief Shorter can jump in, he and I actually went during dismissal. And then the full team, school police, BPD, MOCFS, and the community partner did a walk-around. So we walked around the full school community, looked at different points of where school police would be, where the CBO would be, where the school staff already is located at the end of the day so that we can make sure all those points were being addressed to be able to make sure that the community felt safe. Again, before I talk about the incidents, I just also want to reiterate that Safe Passage is a deterrent. Again, we want to make sure that young people, community members feel safe and that they're seeing, they're seeing bodies or people that are actually there to deter young people from engaging in inappropriate behavior. And all Safe Passage members have an orange, bright orange vest that says Safe Passage on them. What you see here is actually reported incidents that are a half mile. The next slide will show a mile, but these are reported incidents that we receive that include rape, robbery, and shootings. And this is year-over-year data where our Safe Passages are and you will be able to see that there's been a decrease where we actually have Safe Passage. Also want to point out that we are working with the Mayor's Office of Community Affairs to participate in a roundtable because again, the goal is to have more community involvement to be able to participate in Safe Passage. So the next slide again talks about the one-mile radius and the data that we have collected. And again, some of the schools, again, we just started January 2nd because we started after the winter break, but we did want to be able to share some of that data as well. The measured outcomes that we shared two weeks into the program at the beginning of the school year, we wanted to be able to share that again, is decreased in reported incidents of violent crimes within a mile radius of the school. And so five months in, we're already beginning to see that. Again, increase in student attendance. We know this is only one of the many strategies that schools have, but because we heard repeatedly from school leaders and parents and young people that one reason why they were not coming to school regularly is because they did not feel safe traveling to and from school. This was just one of the strategies in partnership with City Schools that we put in place. And then a decrease in resident business calls for service. And so this is where we're working closely to continue to try to gather this data from both BPD and school police because we know residents will call both. They'll either call BPD or they'll call school police. And I'll let Chief Shorter jump in here if he wants to talk a little bit about calls that come in.
So we have seen a decreased calls for service, especially in the Southern District at Digital Harbor. Prior to my coming on, I often would see on the news how it was complete chaos around the Digital Harbor campus, but there has been a decrease in calls for service and complaints from citizens. What they have asked for is increased cameras within the community. So we're working diligently to put the cameras at our schools to help the community out in the specific neighborhoods regarding any juvenile-related incidents.
Thank you, Chief Shorter. So we have multiple touchpoints. Prior to actually implementing the program, we did a professional learning for all of our community-based partners in partnership with City Schools and BPD where we actually did a walkthrough of the expectations, what the expectations were for the CBOs, kind of actually what Monty talked about. We walked through reporting mechanisms. We walked through how to actually turn in invoices and I'll have my Chief of Staff go over that in a little bit. But we also have touchpoints throughout. And so we had our first quarterly meeting in November where we brought the CBOs together in partnership again with City Schools and BPD. We talked about what was working, what wasn't working, what tweaks we need to make. And then we did a marathon sprint. So during the week of the 16th through the 20th, we hit every single school with our CBOs, with BPD, with City Schools Police. And we talked about the glows and the groves. And so that's where we were able to hear, you know, do we need to... And so that's where we were able to hear, you know, do we need to look at a different communication? Some schools were saying how they were using text messages to be able to communicate quickly. Others were saying, well, we would love to have, to be able to use walkies and all be on the same channels. Some schools said, well, no, we don't want that because the kids can hear the walkies. And so then they'll scatter other ways. But that marathon sprint that we did was really telling. That's also when we met with the schools that we were going to be implementing the new, the new safe passage. We also had a professional development for all our CBOs around communications. And when we say communications, communicating out broadly to any media outlet, communicating broadly to different communities. We work very closely with MEMA because of, you know, different times right now. And so we have palm cards. We are able to go out and we meet with the CBOs. We provide them with the palm cards, different look forwards, how to engage with our community members and any questions that they may have. And then we have our third quarter check-in, as well as our end-of-the-year wrap-up. I do also want to say that we are always out touching our, our schools, just doing check-ins to just feel the pulse of what is, is happening. And then every month, the CBOs turn in a monthly report. And so, and also, they turn in any incident reports. And so I'm going to give just brief examples of the difference between a monthly report and an incident report. And so one of our CBOs submitted in their monthly report where, as they were engaging with young people during the month of December, a number of young people were sharing that they were anxious about the upcoming holiday, because their families were struggling, struggling and didn't have the opportunity to purchase gifts. And so the CBO invited them to their annual Christmas giveaway. And so those young people and their families participated in that Christmas giveaway, and they're still building, continuing that relationship with that CBO. We had another in the monthly reports where the CBO shared that as they're, they've been engaging with students and community members, young people that have been disruptive and smoking on properties, they have actually engaged with them to, to help them understand the importance of respecting others' properties. And so building out those relationships, understanding the loitering, and then engaging the community member to also be part of that conversation. And then the other, I just, in, in, at this one school, there'd been, and I'll just say the McDonald's on Kane Street, there'd been a lot of activity with our young people. And so the community partner has actually partnered with that McDonald's, and they've come up with a system where only five students go in at a time, and the other students line up and engage with the community partner. And so it has worked, because it's not where now you can't go into the store, and again, this is after-school, but they're able to engage in meaningful conversation, and the young people are still able to go into the McDonald's after. And so it's really cut down on any inappropriate behavior, any back and forth with management. And so management has really been appreciative of that. And then an incident, an example of an incident report would be the example of the unfortunate incident that took place outside of ACE, where there was a shooting. And this is where the collaboration really came into play. And so it happened in close proximity to ACE, and school police was there immediately. Chief Shorter reached right out to me. The, the community-based partner reached right out to me. Chief Shorter explained what was happening. The community-based partner worked very closely with school, school police to make sure that young people remain safe during the lockdown. But then as a follow-up, a family member, a mom, actually reached out to me. And I connected that mom with that community-based partner, and they are now actually working closely with that family and providing mentorship. So, and then earlier in the year, again, to talk about how the importance of having school-based violence intervention, there was an incident where at a school, where there's school-based violence intervention, that partner, based upon what they were hearing in the school, reached out. And so we were able to partner with school police, BPD, as well as that partner, to have additional resources available at dismissal, to ensure that there was nothing additionally that was happening and that the full school community was safe. And so it's really, really exciting to see that we were able to expand so quickly. We have each day get different requests to continue to expand, but we're using both quantitative and qualitative data to drive our decision. We do have another school that has reached out. We have received that data from city schools, working very closely with Chief Shorter to ensure that this is actually an area where we need to provide. We do have a partner that we are thinking about and the funding to be able to support. Also just want to be mindful that we are also looking at areas that are walking spaces, because that's what safe passage is around walking spaces, and making sure that those communities are safe. The next two slides, and because of time, I'm not going to read, read the actual quotes, but they are glows and grows. And so again, different quotes that we have received. And then just want to also talk about the grows. And so knowing that this is a brand-new program, how can we continue to grow this? And so again, based upon the both quantitative and qualitative data, we know that there continues to be a need for safe passage. We've heard this repeatedly. Also, what we've heard repeatedly from schools is that individuals who frequent the areas around the school, but they're not affiliated with the school. And so working very closely with our partners, with school police, also with our BPD, having school police be able to identify who those students are, and our school leaders being able to identify, like, this is not a student that attends my school, but being able to get that information prior to something happening. A better communication system, which you heard me say. And so we've been able to work very closely with the partners and the school around that. And then finding opportunities to engage with our community associations. And so we're working very closely with Director Singletary, so that we can engage our community. Because again, we also want our communities to be a part of safe passage. And I'm going to have my Chief of Staff be able, just to talk a little bit about the professional developments and learnings.
Before we go to your Chief of Staff, I know Councilman Blanchard has to run, so I want to give him an opportunity to ask a quick question.
No problem.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Dr. Brooks. And I apologize for, for having to reschedule our meeting, because I had a sick toddler and wife. That was my own children and family success problem last week. But so first, I just want to say that because at Digital, which is the, you know, the school in my district that has it, uses the same CBO for safe passage and for the movement team, I keep championing the, I keep championing school-based violence intervention program and forgetting to champion safe passage. So I'll just start by saying that all the great things that I said about school-based violence intervention, I, I also feel that same way. Yeah, ditto. I feel the same way about safe passage. And, you know, in, in some ways, probably when it, it tendents and probably like surrounding neighborhood safety, safe passage may be more kind of direct in that specific area as well. So, so that's great. On the, and I have to run off in like 90 seconds, but I'll just say that, one, on the incidents reported on, if, if someone could follow up with me on, on what that, where those numbers are coming from, because a half-mile radius around Digital Harbor is like the entire South Baltimore Peninsula, and obviously those numbers are a lot higher than that, so I'm just not, I'm not sure what exactly is, is being tracked there, so that'd be helpful. And then I'll just say also to you, and this is definitely a safe passage-specific kudos, the, the safe passage team, because the bus stops near Digital are right next to Cross Street Market, a lot of businesses in that corridor. I had the chance to speak with the Director of Federal Main Street about this yesterday and say, hey, have you noticed this group? And when you think about them, she was like, yes, it, we're so happy. I've talked to visit, there's a, it's, it's really doing great work there. I also happen to live like a block and a half from that space, and my own personal experience has been like, it's a, a different situation than it was last year. I mean, just completely different. So I think that, yeah, all good stuff with safe passage. Just some curiosity about the incidents reported numbers, and thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, and I hope your, your child feels better. So I'm going to pass it to my Chief of Staff to talk a little bit about how we support the CBOs around submitting invoices.
Okay. First, just to kind of go back to the point about the data. So it was a half-mile radius. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I'm Janelle Penny. I'm the Chief of Staff for MOCFS. So for the data, it was, this was OPI, a BPD data that we got through OPI, half a mile radius between the hours of 2:00 to 4:00, which is the safe passage timeframe. So just to narrow it down into, yes, those safe passage hours. So continuing on with around some of the professional development that we do with our safe passage partners, so of course, we saw the touchpoints that we have with them. If there's any issues arise, and we do make sure that we're also taking notes for trends that we're seeing in their monthly reports, and that we're being responsive to that when we plan out our quarterly meetings, so that we can kind of address some of these issues. A lot of times, we're seeing the same trends between the organizations and the different neighborhoods that they're staffing. So that's something that we work to, to address with the entire collaborative, right, with BPD, our CBO partners, as well as school administration, to also cooperate how they can plan effectively towards making sure there's proper coverage for those areas, as well as that, just all the partners within a certain school zone are able to work together effectively. We are also seeing a lot of, as she, as she said, the, what do I say? The landscape is changing, and so making sure that our partners are very much aware of kind of what the, what things look like happening in schools around, particularly as we do have a lot of schools that have large immigrant populations. And so also to know what their role is in that and how to do, just follow all the processes as led by our partners in the MEMA office.
So I cannot shout out enough the collaboration with Chief Shorter. It's, I have a running joke to say, I'm not law enforcement, so he and I are on speed dial as soon as there's any incident. Before I can dial him, he's dialing me, or vice versa, to make sure that the full school community is safe and that the communication lines are open. I also cannot shout out BPD enough. Lisa Reynolds, who I know had to leave, has been there at every single meeting to make sure that we are all on the same page. And I also want to shout out our Monty partner, because whenever there's an incident where we need additional resources or support, just hope globally, we're able to reach out to them to get those resources and supports. So I just want to just say, this is definitely a collaborative, and thank you to everyone.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Brooks. I, you know, this, of course, is also the other program that I was really excited about, which is why you guys are first up. And I know we are only a couple of months from that initial meeting, but I was hoping to, you know, see what we've learned, you know, thus far in the school year, and see if we can iterate or maybe expand. And I'm glad to see you guys are already expanding. I really appreciate the work you guys have been doing at Walter P. Carter, you know, you and, and Chief Shorter. It's been incredibly helpful, and I, you know, checked in with the principal recently, and he's been really pleased with the progress. I'm going to ask a couple of very quick questions, knowing that technically, we have gone past my committee time. We started a little bit late, and I want to be cognizant of people's time. With the data piece, I noted you guys are only focused on rape, robbery, and shootings. I was curious why that, and particularly because if I'm thinking about young people, they would, I'm thinking assault, I'm thinking larceny, and some of the things like that, things that younger people might get into. And even then, it might not necessarily answer or address what we're looking to address here. The other thought I had was the calls for service piece, because sometimes it's not necessarily a crime, but it might be, you know, a large gathering or rowdiness that can potentially turn into something that we don't want it to turn into, that you guys have an opportunity to intervene or prevent from ever happening, because you've got boots on the ground. And so I, I think there's a lot that we can maybe do on the data piece to help us get more clarity on the impact that having folks out there is having on activity. Just a thought on there.
So I'll start, and then I'll let Chief Shorter join, because again, I'm not law enforcement. But we do also look at assaults, rape, robbery, and shooting. So those are what we're looking at. That actually came about when we thought about the quantitative data, worked very closely with our law enforcement partners, those were the upticks. That's what we were seeing reported around the school areas by our, our young people and what we were hearing from, from our families. I'll let Chief Shorter jump in.
So what I can say is, just perusing the areas and doing my own patrols, and having supervisors go out, I've noticed the, the relationship and the relational equity between the students, the safe passage team members, and my team members, and the school environment has really, really, really grown. To just give an example, we had the incident at ACE, the shooting that just outside the school. Like Dr. Brooks stated, we were immediately on the phone. We were immediately able to identify two of the three suspects involved in the situation. A lot of the incidents, because like the climate teams in the schools have been decreased, have, are decreasing, so assaults are decreasing. The larcenies that the businesses are experiencing, because a lot of the larcenies occur at the businesses, so those have decreased as well. I don't have the exact numbers, but I can give it for you for the next meeting. And the safe passage team, and being able to communicate with the young people, are developing relationships that I'm looking forward to having my school police officers develop those same relationships, which led me to create my community resource officer, who'll be going, eventually I'll have a unit to go around to the different schools in reference to crime reduction, crime prevention, the DARE program, the GREAT program, and we're also bringing back the school safety program at the lower and middle school levels. And once I get my staffing up, we'll be able to go to the middle school levels, because I think the middle schools are to me like middle children, right? They're often overlooked. So that's my goal in doing this. And those, those are Monty and Safe Passage, and the different CBOs can help me develop those programs. So eventually, I'm not going to say it'll be a zero, because you can never tell what a young person will do, but that's the ultimate goal, and it has been reduced because of programs like Safe Passage and Monty and stuff like that. So they've been reduced. And if it's happening on the outside, we get the calls from BPD, because the calls through KAT are transferred over. A lot of times, those, those things are mediated through the school administration to resolve those issues before they become larger issues in the community.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I, it, it would be helpful to also see like this from a calls for, calls for, calls for service perspective. I think you guys noted that you've been looking at it, but the chart we have here is not that, and, and that's okay. But I think as we think about evaluating the program and its success, it helps us to understand the outcomes. And you guys are going to, yeah, I'm not talking about you, because you're not going to see me all that often, but Monty knows, BPD knows. I always talk about data. It's my thing. And then the, the other piece I noted we didn't have in the presentation, it would be really, really helpful. Do we have a sense of the programmatic costs and, and the sort of basic operations? Like what do we expect when we roll out safe passage in a school? Like what does that mean?
So I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to my partner. So because it varies based upon the footprint of the school building, we do have, each, each CBO receives a contract, and based upon the contract, the footprint of the school, how many actual members of the team are actually at the school, their administrative costs, the, what they may need. So they may need like walkie-talkies or things of that nature. They work very closely with our Chief of Staff to be able to, to determine what those needs are. And so again, when you have a huge footprint like Patterson, as opposed to a smaller footprint, I'll just use Walter P. as an example, then it, it varies. So I will have Janelle jump in.
Just to add to that, so we do have, I will say one that stands out for us in particular is Dunbar and NAF, because of both the timing, the schools get out about an hour apart from each other, as well as just the size of that footprint, as well as the neighborhood, the two housing communities within that neighborhood, and some of the ongoing concerns of that one. That contract was hired because of just the needs of that school, the size of the school and the needs of the community. So we do have, it's the different contracts that vary based on the needs of that community and what the CBO partners need in terms of staff strength and just like equipment and administration to do it. But we can certainly provide a breakdown of those based on schools.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful, like a breakdown of program cost per school, so we can get a sense for scaling if we decide to scale to more schools, what that might mean budgetarily.
Can I just, also, I just want to just add a caveat to that. So when we give you that breakdown, just want to, just put a note that it will vary. Will also vary based upon the time, because for instance, NAF and Dunbar, because there's two dismissal times, the time is going to be a longer time than maybe a school that has one school on its campus that has a shorter dismissal time. So we'll put So we'll put all of that in there. So there'll be some nuances.
Sure.
Based upon, based upon the individual needs of the community.
Sure. Yeah. And I would imagine we probably have like a number of people that we are funding to be on site, depending on the size of the site and the, the hours that we have them there, whether it's morning and evening or just evening. Yeah. Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Councilman, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more kind of sort of like just a comment to you guys. Like from me being on the council, the last term to this term, I can honestly say, and some of the reasons probably because I've known you guys, the work you've done before you got in these positions. And I can honestly say that this is probably the first time me being on the council, I've really seen the communication collaboration of the agencies like really coming together to make this thing work. So I just wanted to say, you know, give a kudos to all you guys that are here today that are really doing the work because I've, I've reached out to you guys personally. And I mean, I got to be honest, like everything, everything I reached out to you guys about to get done, it, it's gotten done. You know, I've, I've called you numerous times, Dr. Brooks. I mean, it's times where the CEO even called me and she said, "Councilman, is there anything you need? You don't call me for anything." I said, "These are doing the work. Like, I don't need to call you for anything." So again, I just want to say, you know, thank you to all the hard work. I, I heard you mention, you know, she showed up, you know, a couple of times. And just to see the work that you've been doing, sir, like way before you got in this position, like is on, like on her, when I worked in the state's attorney's office, like you were, you know, boots on the ground doing the work. So to see Baltimore City Public Schools, you know, have a treasure with you, like a leader who was able to lead prior to you getting in this position, just want to say thank you for taking the position and for, you know, navigating and building those relationships amongst the agencies that are here today. So again, it's just a kudos to all you guys for the work that you're doing. The question that I do have is for Dr. Brooks. I know that we're going to have some challenges probably moving forward. You know, there's been a hike in BG&E bills tremendously. And, you know, I know prior to this, you know, you guys had maybe budgets set to the side to help those families with BG&E and things that you've helped in the past. How does it look? Just say for instance, a prime example, if we was, you know, helping just say a thousand, you know, Baltimore City, you know, residents in their homes, does it cut down to now 500 because of the fact that the hike of BG&E, those bills that need to be paid? How does that look? Do you think we're in a position where we, when we still be able to help those families out? Or are there going to be some challenges there?
So great question. And just for the, for the group, we're talking about our CAP centers and our OHEP program. So I actually just had a meeting with BG&E last week. They're actually going to be doing some chat and shoes at our CAP centers to talk about additional resources that are available. We are, we still do have our OHEP program to be able to support families. We are definitely looking at how we can reach out to other partners to be able to support because we know that this is going to be a challenge. Our goal always is to continue to support as many families as we can and then to, to link them to other resources because we don't want to see anyone go without any gas and electric. But I, I am very excited with the additional partnerships that we have to include, as I said, BG&E. We immediately sat down with them, talked about them coming into our CAP centers to do chat and shoes and then us collectively going into different community centers, both CAP staff as well as BG&E so that we can get the message out to as many Baltimore City residents as possible about the resources and services available to them.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks.
You're welcome.
As I close, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a request that even as we move forward, there are like two agencies that I think should be here that was not present, which is the state's attorney's office and also the sheriff department. Because they, I mean, everybody pays a big role in, in this when it comes to law enforcement and safety. So we can request to have someone, representatives from those agencies, come that'd be greatly appreciated. And that's it. I'll leave with that. Again, thank you guys for all the hard work that you're doing. It shows, and I know that in the beginning, there are some struggles, but you know, there's no struggle, there's no progress. And I see the progress that's going on, you know, with you guys in these agencies. So again, just want to say thank you and just keep up the great work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a couple more things. Going back to the question that I asked MONC earlier, I would make the same recommendation. And I'm, I'm not sure if MONC's infrastructure would be helpful here. But when we come across folks who are making referrals to other resources, I really think it's important we track that. I wonder if there should be some coordination in, in that system so we don't track it in multiple different systems and that can't talk? Or I'm not sure how to answer that question. But I, I definitely think it would be wise for us to capture that sort of referral to resources so we know what resources we need, how much of them we need, and, you know, where they're needed. So just a thought there. The other thought I had was, you noted something I thought was really, really interesting. We all know is, is a reality is the interaction between students, excuse me, non-students around schools. And that also ties, I believe, to the resources piece. You know, a lot of those folks, they're not students. They're nowhere near students. Sometimes they're adults. How do we refer there? And back to my initial point, how do we track that so that we're making sure we're getting the right resources to the right places at the right time? So you can answer that if you'd like. But it, it's just something to think about as we sort of fine-tune the program going forward.
Yep. Thank you for that. I think that's when we work really closely with school police. When we identify the young person and/or adult that is showing up in those school communities that should not be there at dismissal. That's when we work very close, as I said, with the school police that are, are right there to be able to support in that way. But then we'll, we'll work, I'll work with school police to see how we can track that data so that we can have those numbers.
Do, does MONC have a role in this program at all?
So because the partners are the same at most of the CBOs, excuse me, most of the schools where school-based violence. And so the, the partners that are in the school building are the same, they're not the same people, but the same partners that are at the school. So they actually communicate. So if there's an incident that's taking place in the school, they're able to share with their partners that come in the afternoon to say, there's been an uptick of possible incident that may happen after school. They share that information with the school police officer that's there, with those that are coming on for the afternoon. And all of the school safe passage come in actually before dismissal. So they're able to connect with the school police officer, with the school administrator, if it's school-based violence, with those partners there so that they are aware if there's anything they need to be on alert with. And then again, like I said, Chief Shorter and I are on the phone so regularly that we're sending out alerts to be on the lookout for this, be mindful of this. So there, there is constant communication there as well.
That's good. I think another thought here, we often end up in silos. And I, I think a lot of this work is very much related. It's not exactly the same, but it is very related. I, I wonder if you may or may not have it, and will you have sorts to talk about how you want to coordinate, how often you touch base? But I think that's something you guys might want to consider. And that's all I got here. So thank you all. This is our first of six meetings.
Before we close, Mr. Chair, I just want to verify that we'll get the list of the.
Follow-ups.
Follow-ups so that I can send it out to the agencies and get it all back.
Yes, we will get that to you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all. This hearing is in recess.